First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone that came out, those that are Empire enthusiasts. I see that you put the DVRs in record mode on demand. I appreciate you coming out. Those that came out because of the fact that this is a town hall meeting. I just wanted to let you guys congratulate yourselves. This is the 10th town hall meeting every time. And I really appreciate what you guys have. Here, I'm going with the rules again. I do it every time. It's open to whatever questions you have, comments, interact with your fellow residents. We will not get personal. We will not be derogatory towards another person. That will not happen. But if you have questions, we'll try to answer them. If not, I'll give the answers to you. And basically, at the end, I'll probably have a few words to say. But this is your meeting, and I'm coming. I'm learning from you. I'm learning that some of the things that are happening in the village that you're very concerned about, I do try to bring them up in the village board meetings and things. And I guess people think that I'm doing this because of me, that I'm doing a lot of it. It's due to you people. It's due to you guys here that come out and express your opinions. And I listen to you and bring them up. I mean, I did criticize for it, but that's what I'm here for as far as representing other people. So first of all, we're going to start with anyone has questions or remarks or statements to make. We have what we call an open mic. We got another mic, so we can have two. And you don't have to give a name and address. Just you can just get up and basically ask questions. Who wants to be first? Really? So you're going to wait till he gets started or?
I'll go.
Okay. Until we get started, then you want to ask later?
I just, I really wanted to do this last night, but you all kind of took a minute getting to your general discussion for the audience. But my question is this, and I hate to bring this to a town hall, however, it's election season. And on the Saturday of the children, my children, someone else that's running for the board with her children, we came up and the children were placing information on cards. I came into the bathroom and I had a stack of papers in my hand. I came in this bathroom. I was on my way out and saw one of my kids run past the door. Went out to approach them, came back in, stepped into the children, spoke to a couple people, and we proceeded to leave. As we were pulling off, someone stopped us and told us that we are not allowed to pass out literature in the village hall. But I can recall in November, board meeting, the mayor saying that there is no ordinance. Did I miss something? Did we get an ordinance? Where are we with that?
Okay, you said inside the village hall, but you, did you say you put things on people's cars?
We were putting it on the cars, but when I came into the building to use the restroom, I did have a stack in my hand. I did not give it to anybody. But they were in my hands. But when I came to the board meeting, I want to say back November, December, you guys had a discussion on election year. And according to the mayor and trustee Myers, there is no ordinance. Did we get one since then?
Okay, now, no, okay. First of all, it was an agreement that we made. Oh goodness, this was back before this building was built. That we would not pass out or do any election area in the rotunda. That's this area. Over there, we can have a rotunda get a room. That we would not do any election area there. As far as putting pamphlets, literature on people's cars, that's all. I've seen that many times. Not just campaign material. The people that come by and promoting things, they stick it in people's cars. So that's something, there is no rules of that. There's no, there is no ordinance. As I said before, there was an agreement. We talked about that. I think you're right. Maybe it was in November. We brought that up. We talked about-
That agreement is amongst two. I'm a support man. I'm not trustee.
Okay. It was something that you, I mean, what you're saying is 100% correct. I mean, we, and I just can't give you a correct answer because the agreement was just an agreement. It wasn't with people or because candidates changed. But it was with the administration at the time or with the village that we would not, and those that were running for office at that time and any time since, would not pass out material here. We also have, you know, there was another thing about wearing buttons, wearing your elect so-and-so button. That was another thing that we would ask that you take your buttons off when you enter here in the rotunda. And you're right, there is nothing in writing. And it was researched that there isn't anything. But as far as passing things out and putting on people's cars, there is no agreement legally. Who's next?
I do want, I'm going to follow up on that.
Who's next? Did you take hold of this, Larry? Larry, did you take? They can't hear you.
No.
I want to follow up on that because there are policies and things that are out there, as you say, to where there are agreements. And you just stated that there's no literature in the rotunda. But if you have a form, rules are made for that also. From what I see, we did have campaign literature in the form that we had. And I'm looking at it to where, as you stated it, things are made up as we go along. Because I served on the senior committee and, you know, it's an organization. And I'm one of the subcommittees that I have a thing that I do on Fridays. But I'm looking at it to where I was told you can't have campaign literature at my function. See, and I'm looking at it to where I like to see where that's written. Not the way I hear word like grandfather then, you know, from the old days, from the way back when. I've been here 50 years with this, you know, and yet ain't nothing written. See, and I'm sitting on a committee of seniors, oversight committee, and there's no written bylaws that I've seen yet. And I've been on that committee almost seven years. You know, and I'm going, what are we doing? Making rules as we go along? And this is where you come in with this, where they make agreements as they go along. I want to see things in writing from now on. I want to see procedures with big stamps on them. Because this is outrageous, especially now that everything's in an election mode to where people exercising their rights to go. Can't do that. You know, because they're sitting in higher positions than maybe me. See, because I've been there, and I've never seen nothing.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, Larry. You said there's nothing in writing and you're on that board?
Yes.
Then what you should do is talk to whoever's in charge of that board and find out if there is anything in writing and go from there. I'm sure you can find that out. If it's the senior committee, I'm sure they have my office. I'm sure they're written somewhere. I'm serious. I mean, they're written somewhere. And if not, then they need to be established. Okay, who's next? Because I do have some guest speakers here that I want to get into. But right now, who's next? No one. Okay, guys. I mean, this is your forum. This is your town hall. Yes, sir. The thing is already on.
Well, I'd like to find out about the kids out here. Why hasn't anybody done anything for the kids? I've been trying to get the baseball together, and I come to here. Anybody say I'll help you? All I say, all I hear them say is you can't do it. It's too much money. They won't pay the money out to join the baseball. But it's not, where are you going to go to pay $40 and have a baseball game? There's no place at all you can do it. But the only thing is that we need help from others. We need help from the trustees. What give the trustees to? Now, once have I heard anything about baseball, basketball, or anything? Unless it says, oh, we're going to have basketball. That's it. Now, you tell me, how can we have baseball here? And what can you do to help us here?
Okay, now, I beg to differ because at every meeting that we have, even at the townhouse, we announce that you guys are recruiting for baseball.
We're not.
You're not recruiting?
No, we haven't gotten anybody.
No, no. Recruiting.
Okay, recruiting you're talking about. We want them to join-
And that is what I'm saying. That's announced at every meeting that we have. Board or committee is asked, you have literature out there. Now, let me explain to you about the, what did you say? What's wrong?
Because they, the reason for that is they said, okay, fine, they have literature out there. And they say, okay, it costs $100. Because I have different ones around here. He said, it's $100. I said, no, it's not $100.
Okay, then how much is?
It's $40.
So if the person gives you $40, basically?
This is, I'll explain to you how-
Okay, please.
All right. And registration, they pay $70 for a registration fee. They get a half a case of candy. They go out and sell the candy, and it's $30. They keep that money. It comes down to $40. That's all they pay for registration.
Okay, I'm maybe, I'm not giving-
You're not giving it to them?
No, I'm not. Because you're saying when they come to register, they give you $70.
They give you $70.
Okay. You give them a half a case of candy, which is roughly $30 worth.
Right.
They have to sell that. They put that $30 in their pocket?
Right.
Or do they give it back to you?
No, they keep it.
Okay, so they keep that $30, so therefore it only costs them $40?
Right.
Okay. That needs to be explained because I didn't, I didn't know that. I thought, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not the one that does the announcements, but I did hear $100.
I know.
Now, let me explain something to you when you said no one wants to help. Voluntheism is what makes your village great. Without that, we just, anything else, because we cannot afford to pay for every little thing. The baseball has been dormant for, I think, four or five years now. What happened with that, the kids that were, that wanted to become, they get involved and go into other areas. I explained to you, and you talked to me about it, that we have to change something that either the village is going to have to bite the bullet or you have to get a sponsor. But it's kind of hard for people to play, pay to a program that is not ongoing. So therefore, to start it back up, you're going to have to do dramatic and drastic measures. However, if you have a volunteerism, which you have to have to have any successful program, because you can't afford to pay your coaches, that's the sport that you're talking about. It's still not going to be enough, but you still, they're still going to have to pay for equipment. You're going to have to pay to get those fields back in tournament condition. All of those things have to be taken care of. So it's not, you're making it seem like no one wants to help. They need-
No, they does. No, they does. We have $125,000 for the fields out there to be fixed from the pipeline.
Wait a minute.
Oh, don't just say-
I'm just asking your question. You said you have $125,000?
You have $125,000.
Where?
In the, in parts of recreation. I handed the money to the mayor personally.
You gave-
I added the check to him personally for the pipeline.
To who?
From the pipeline.
They gave you $125,000?
They gave us $125,000.
I'm a charger for them. I never seen that. Never heard of it? If you can after the meeting, please let me know, because I will find out. I've never heard, never heard that. That's just the first time you said that is now that I've heard of it, sir.
$125,000 was donated to us-
I know.
It was a grant. It was a grant from the pipeline, not from the governor.
No. Pipeline is in Bridge.
Right.
Okay.
They gave it. I was down there talking to the person in charge. He hadn't been to chat. I signed over. I gave it to the mayor, and that was it.
Wait a minute.
They were going to keep $20,000 of that to go into for the $205,000 or $250,000. The grant that was supposed to come from the governor. It was spent, but then again, we didn't get it because the new governor came in and they put a box.
Okay, but let me ask you a question. You said you got a check and you signed it over?
I did sign the check. I signed it, documents stating- Stating that I received the check.
Why would you sign anything?
Why would I? Because I was there to pick it up.
No, the reason why I'm asking you, why would you sign check or anything? And that would go to elected official the mayor? Why would they give it to you?
It wasn't, I did not sign the check. I signed the document having the check put over to me. The check was then put into the mayor. The check was made out to the village of Saw Village with Mayor Hanks. And I gave it to him personally.
And then they, okay, well, I'll go check that out, because it doesn't-
Matter of fact, I have the phone numbers of the pipeline.
Okay. I have the phone number, sir.
Okay.
But I will do some research. I will get back to you personally. Because to me, I don't understand why they would even give you any kind of documents unless you were a village official.
I was involved in it because I kind of-
No, no, I'm not asking if you was involved. Why would they give you a check?
Because I was the only one down there overseeing what's happening with the pipeline.
They were outside? In other words, they gave you this out at the park?
Out there by the light, out there.
All right, well, sir.
And I handed it to the mayor.
Okay. I'm not doubting that, but I go, I will find out. I will find out.
And that's right there. That right there would help out.
I mean, yes, it, yes, it would. If that's the case, yes, it would. Because like I stated before, your fields have to be tournament ready because you have visiting games. You play here, and they play here, you know?
Well, another thing too is that Public Works is now doing the Niners. I've talked to Kevin. I've worked with Kevin.
So Public Works is doing what, sir?
Is doing the work on the Niners.
Okay.
They contracted the Public Works out because we couldn't get a Friday contractor because they got the Public Works as a union. And if you go through the union, you're going to have somebody in trouble. So I mean, it's all been done. It's all been said.
I'm going to get on that tomorrow morning, and I will definitely, because I have your number, and I will definitely get back with you, Mrs. Sullivan.
I mean, where did they get the $20,000 to put down for the $200 and some thousand?
Who, what are you talking about now?
They get $20,000 out of the $125,000 so they could have money to put down for the $200 and some thousand dollar grant from Brings.
You don't have to put money down on a grant, sir.
It had to be, it was held, it was held.
No, no, you don't have to put, it's not a loan.
Maybe I'm wording it wrong. They had it, they had the $20,000.
You mean, they took $20,000 out of the money? Is that what you said, Mr. Sullivan?
They didn't. They held it so we could get $205,000. Then we would receive $20,000 back.
Who, who, who held? Who held what?
Who's what?
No, you said they held it.
Who?
Who held? Who held the money? You said they held.
I'm not that involved. I don't know that.
You seem very-
I'm not a trustee.
Okay, but you seem very, they gave you a check. Nobody gave me one. So you must be really involved, but-
Well, yes, I was. I've been with the sports association for a long, long time.
Okay, well-
And I'm involved with it now.
Okay.
But if we have that money, and if we can get that money, and it's supposed to be strictly for the fields out there and improving the fields and doing anything to help out the little league. And if we have that, and I don't know where it's at, but we should find out where it's at, that would help us out a lot. And that's what I meant by the trustees helping us.
Well, the trustees, I'm sure each one is an individual. And to them, they want to do, that's what I'm going to tell you, my last thing. Anything that Parks and Recs, they have an event, they ask me a question, they ask me to be involved. I have a problem. I come out, come to the basketball games. When baseball gets up and running, I'll definitely be there to support that. So the only thing I can do is speak for myself. But as far as your question is concerned, I will definitely find out because now I'm intrigued. I'm kind of, so I'm going, I'm going to trace. As I say, I'm going to follow the money. Okay. Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, Mrs. Sullivan, I will do that. Okay, who's, who's next? Okay. This one gentleman. There, I have a problem with you asking. You're going to answer just that question.
That question is open to this.
Okay. Would you give the mic?
I think everybody's here. I think so. Back there. No, it's about the $125,000 we received from Enbridge. The Goers Board knew all about it. In fact, it was sent from last year's budget. If you look at the spending for Parks and Recs, $125,000 was from the money issued from Enbridge. $200,000 for the grant that we're expecting through the IDNR. So the board knew about it. It is in last year's budget, so if you have any questions, you can look at it. That money is right now is currently sitting in a special account, especially because it was earmarked for the baseball fields. If you remember, two years ago, Enbridge came in, redid all the pipes. And when they did, they used our baseball fields to park all the vehicles, put all their equipment, they put all their lumber and stuff in. And what they did was they torqued those fields. So what we ended up doing was, that $125,000 is sitting in the account. It might be a little bit less because we went in there last year, put down some weed eater around the fences. We did a bunch of cleaning up, so we used some of that funds given in there and cleaned up those fields up. But not a lot. The other thing is $200,000 from the Belger's office. You'll see online everywhere, senators and state governors out there holding signs in front of parks saying, "Belger, release our money now." That was one of the grants the IDNR, grants ever received through IDNR, $205,000. Really, that grant was for $200 and approximately $25,000 because there was a 10% matching grant on that. So we talked about the $20,000. Again, you're looking at a matching grant with about 10%, which had to pay $20,000. So kind of clear it up. And again, you know, Ed did get the check. He was out there in the field. He didn't bring it in. But the check wasn't made out to Mayor Hanks. I just want to make sure. I thought that's what he said. The check was made out to the village of Saw Village. And as soon as we received those funds, they were directly to the finance director. Finance director puts those mark, those funds in a special account earmarked for that. So I just want to clear that up. Because I know there's a lot of residents sitting here saying, thinking the mayor got $125,000. It's staying in my pocket. It's not. And those funds are to be used for those baseball fields. The important thing was last year, knowing that we were supposed to get those funds, the $200,000 through the IDNR. We wanted to include those funds with that $125,000 so we could get a lot more work done. And that includes, you know, if you kind of warn these, you saw that quarter of a mile walking path, including putting soccer fields in, including doing all our ball fields, all new playground equipment. That was all figured in that. So hopefully that clears it up. Go ahead, anyone going home thinking that I took money. It's not.
Okay, I appreciate that, Bear, and-
I want to apologize to the mayor.
No, no, I want to apologize to you because, but you probably know your background as well. But anyway, I want to apologize to you and tell you that, okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't, that was probably one of those things that I had a brain freeze or whatever, but I didn't remember that particular part. But if it's there, being legitimate, you know, if we get the program up and running, good, that's a good down payment to help get your fields going.
Wouldn't that help pay for the kids if they can't afford it?
First of all, let me explain. I'm not trying to-
You always say that they can't afford it. Let's figure out a way for them to join.
Okay, Mrs. Sullivan, okay. I can't, I'm not going to make that call simply because I'm not in charge of Parks and Recs. The Parks and Recs director would have to make that call along with his Parks and Recs board. I used to be in charge of Parks and Recs. And I didn't do anything without my board because that's my, that's my base. If they, if they make a decision to take that money and use it for those that cannot pay for it, that's up to them. They bring that back to the village, to the trustees, and then we can vote on that. I did the same thing, but I was in charge of Parks and Recs. We had people that couldn't afford the basketball. Because baseball was run by Saw Village Sports Association. They had their own. Only thing we did was make sure that the fields were up and running.
I know. I was president.
Okay, so you do know that we didn't get involved. You had your own board, and all we did was just support you. So this is the same thing. If you make that decision, are you on the Parks and Recs board?
Am I on the Parks and, I work with the Parks and Recreation.
No, but are you on the board? Are you on the Parks and Recs board?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then when you guys have the meeting, you can discuss that.
It doesn't do any good because all they say is that, okay, fine. Okay, I say, let's get going. Well, we can't do it. We can have to help you say, well, we should do this or we should do that. But go out and get somebody else to do it. Yes?
Okay, well, I mean, I cannot supersede, I can't supersede them or no one, no other trustee can supersede. Larry, why are you preaching for that?
Because it needs to be explained on what you heard.
Wait a minute.
See, that needs to be explained.
I'll give it to them, but I want to say one thing. What I say about this money has nothing to go against with administration or anything. All I want to do is have the trustees vote in favor of it. And if the mayor would love to have it, it's up to the trustees to pass it.
But then, when your board brings it, then we're discussing.
No, my board, I'm working on it. I am the person that is in charge of bringing the-
But you have a board, you have, your trustee that's in charge is the one that breaks into the board of the whole.
Well, can somebody pull him to the side and explain to him, is this all we going to be on the baseball?
No, no. But I'm just, again, no, no, don't get it, Mrs. Sullivan. I understand, ma'am, I understand. But he's trying, he's been asking about this for quite a while.
I got that. Well, can somebody pull him to the side and explain to him?
I told you I would talk to you, and I did. I will get back with you with the other questions that you asked. I will get back to you personally. Because I do know there's other concerns, and maybe we can all get together and put our heads together to find out how we can resolve it. And I mean that, because this is about the children. Okay, who's next? Do you have a question?
Me?
Yes.
No, I don't have a question. Only question, I do have a question. I just want to, are you all going to put lights on 223 and Peach Street? That's all. That light is out?
Yes. If your light is out, if your light is out, if your light is out, they've already wrote that down. It's known in Public Works. They just have to get around to it because they bring that out at one time. Maybe I would say once every two weeks, and they just do that. Yes, sir?
How far is that water bill and what you call bill going to go? How much, how much are they keep raising? How much are they keep raising the water bill and the garbage? Since I've been here for 12 years, it just keeps going up and up and up and up.
I don't, I'm not on the board, but if we want new water, which is going to take new pipes, and it's going to go up some more, otherwise we'll keep that nasty wastewater. Somebody got to figure something.
Yeah, but why is it going up if we got the nasty water? Okay, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, it's fine.
I don't drink the water. If you do, that's your, that's your business. I got to go out and buy water, because I, I won't drink it.
But your question was how much more is it going to keep going?
How much more is it going to keep going up?
Right now, the referendum that we have, we're at the max right now, $7.50 per 1,000.
Is that going to go up anymore then?
Unless there's another referendum voted in, in order for you to get-
Do we get to vote on that?
Yes. You voted, did you vote on the last one?
No, no, I didn't know nothing about that.
Did you vote that we, because it was right there when we had the- Election for, I think it was, I think it wasn't a, it was a presidential, I'm not sorry, but it was an office election, but it was on the, on the ballot. To increase the water in increments, starting from-
People vote increases, can you say that?
Pardon me?
Increase the money that they're charging us. They voted for that?
Yes, they did. They voted, it was a vote there in order for you to get Lake Michigan water. These are the increases that you would have to vote on in order to make that happen.
She just said that if we get Lake Michigan water, it's going to cost a lot.
That was, that was, that was back then. Now, we're moving to, but now it's gonna, it will cost more. And it was explained at that time. It was explained at that time that if we get Lake Michigan water, by the time we get through with our infrastructure. We, right now, we have to qualify from the IDNR in order to get Lake Michigan water. Right now, we have to get our pipes and our leakage down to a single percentage digit.
Didn't we get money from the governor to something like that?
No, not yet, it's coming. I mean, well, we asked for a 4.8 million dollar forgiveness grant. We have a loan right now of almost $5 million that we went out and got and secured for the three pumping stations, well, one, two, and three. The distribution, we, we refurbished that, those particular pumping stations. That's where that money was from. The government's governor, we went down, I'm sorry, that way, but it was supplied for, to get a forgiveness grant. And he came out last year and said that he was going to give Saw Village a 4.8 million dollar forgiveness grant to pay that loan off. That was last year.
All I'm concerned about, hey, my pockets are only so deep.
Then, like I said before, the next, in order to go any higher, we have to put another referendum out there.
Well, when they put it out, I'd like to know about it.
You will, but you, you, you will, I'm sure you will, but you said you didn't vote on the last one.
Well, I, I didn't know about it, it's the first time I...
Oh, it was, this room was packed. This room was packed when they did that. I mean, it was standard remotely, because we had a presentation upon presentation, we had people that were talking, people that was asking. That meeting lasted about four hours. It was just that packed about the water, pros and cons. So, I'm sure that if, if it goes any further, it's gonna do the same thing.
Okay, then I'll be here the next day.
Make sure. Who, who, who has it? Okay. I asked this gentleman to come out, he's an investor here in the village. He has many properties. I talked to him about things that the village can do if we have problems with people that have Section 8 and the landlords that own those homes that rent out to subsidize housing. How do we go about, you know, reprimanding them? What kind of steps do we do? I mean, we do have crime-free housing, he's gonna explain that to you too. And what type of teeth? Because it seems to me that a lot of times when we try to talk about that, it's a sore subject, but it kept, it goes on. This young man, I've seen some of his properties, he cares. He's out here, he understands what you should. If you're gonna invest in your properties, you wanna make sure that they're taken care of. You wanna make sure, because that's your money. You're, you wanna make sure that you're not disrupting the neighborhood by doing that. A lot of times that happens, a lot of these homes that are owned by banks will have the one to come out to monitor. This young gentleman does come out to monitor his, his, uh, his investment. So, at this time, he's gonna give us a little foresight and a little thing, tips what we can use as a village and what you can, you know, kind of look for if you're a private, not investor, but a private homeowner. What you should do if you encounter something, something like that. So, at this time, I'd like to break up Mr. Ed McRae.
Hi, Jordan, my name's Ed McRae. I own quite a few rental properties out here, I've been doing this for about 10 years. And I came here tonight because I'm kinda like reaching out to you guys to maybe get something going to where, to get something going with crime-free housing. We do have a crime-free housing program in place. I went to the six-hour meeting over the summer. And we had some lady from Palatine out there explaining to us about their problems and what they had. And nothing was about crime-free housing. It was about recognizing gangs, what you can do to prevent your house from being broken into, and maybe a little bit of crime-free housing. But I went there to find out how I could put somebody out of my house if they are committing crimes out here. And I didn't find out anything about that. I also do some property management for other people in other cities. And I sat through their crime-free housing meetings, and it has a little bit of teeth into it to where you have to sign this piece of paper, have this included in your lease that if your tenant or resident commits any type of these crimes, you have to kick them out. And, you know, I, I would hear like people talking in the background over there about, you know, complaining like, okay, this is to the city, they're saying, oh, you're gonna help me put this person out? Okay, then you're gonna pay for me missing all this rent? And now, me being out here where I had pretty much, every single one of my houses broken into, besides the one by you on Willow Tree, every one of my houses have been broken into. People are, people move out because of that. And, you know, it's hard for me as an investor to keep putting good people into these places. So, not my mindset, but another investor mindset would be, I picked this house up for $10,000, now I put a couple thousand into it. I'm collecting my Section 8 check every month. Who, why do I care who I put in this? I'm getting my rent, and meanwhile, it's those people that are breaking into houses, doing, you know... And I'm not saying it's just Section 8 people. It could be a cash-paying tenant that's selling drugs to pay the rent or doing whatever. And there's no teeth behind that person getting arrested, ruining the community, hanging out on the street corners, breaking into people's houses. And I'm kinda like reaching out to you guys to get together to talk to your trustees, or board members, or whoever, that we gotta get something going out here, because it, it's rough for me to find good people. And I think I do a pretty good job of that, and not everyone does. And, you know, I've been, I've been doing this for the past 10 years, pretty much every day. And I go to seminars across the US, learning to, how to, you know, work with tenants, find good people. And I got some pretty good, uh, pretty good stuff that I have going on. What he was referring to earlier about section people, uh, Section 8 tenants, how to get them out. I'm very familiar with the program. And I sent him the lease that I signed with Section 8. And there's a clause in it, I don't know the exact wording, but if residents keep disturbing the peace, there is grounds for termination of their contract. So, that's in the contract. Now, whose job is it to put them out? I don't know. I would refer back to the landlord, but from, I guess you would say, the bad landlord's perspective or investor's perspective is, I'm getting my rent, okay? You know, so he can, you know, use the excuse of, I can't put them out. It's in your lease, you can put them out. Okay, well, what, what Saw Village gonna do to you? Nothing. So, and then I also talked to a couple cops out here. And they don't know anything about the crime-free housing. And, you know, something has to be enforced. I love what I do, I, you know, I, I try to run to good people. And I did run to one person that was very, very bad. And I didn't know, they got arrested a couple times. I didn't know about it till they moved out, till I, well, I had a victim and everything. But when the cops came by later, he's like, yeah, man, that guy was one of the biggest thieves in Saw Village. I'm like, I feel bad, because I have all my stuff broken into. Now, for that person to be doing it to other people because of me, I felt bad. And, but there was nothing I could do about it, so I didn't know. So, you know, me going to this six-hour meeting for my crime-free housing, it's like, I'm there because I'm concerned. And I had to sign a piece of paper saying, alright, if someone commits this crime, or whatever, or whatnot, I have to put them out. And there was maybe about 15 other landlords there. And, you know, and it's not those landlords you have to worry about. It's the other landlords that are not there that you have to worry about, putting people, random people in houses, not doing the proper checks, you know? So, uh, yeah, I don't know, I'm, I'm here to reach out to the trustees or board members. If you guys ever need any help, this is what I've been doing the past 10 years, every day and night.
Are you registered with our police department?
With my houses, or what?
Yes, under the crime-free housing that we have here in the village.
What I did was, I signed that piece of paper, I registered all, I don't know if it was called registering. I put down the list of all my property addresses. And what was supposed to happen is, they were supposed to send, maybe send me a card in the mail if someone in my, one of my properties did something wrong.
Becky Salinsberg is, is one of the spoken crime-free...
Becky Salinsberg.
Yeah, Salinsberg. She's over that, to where, I was a housing commissioner, and we started that crime-free housing some years ago. And we had it to where it's a voluntary, to where you go in and register your home with the police department.
The people who are voluntary is not the one you gotta worry about.
But see, the thing is, if you're not registered, you're not under the program to where...
You couldn't enforce those rules, yeah. Yeah?
Yeah, no, to where, there's so many violations that a home can get. See, but you have to talk to that officer?
I did.
Yeah.
I, I had a house on Carroll that I was working on all summer. Every day, as I'm in the house, I see three or four people in there going up there every hour. I called her, and eventually something did happen. Was it because of her, or was it not because of her? There was a shooting afterwards? But all you had to do was maybe sit in that cul-de-sac right across the, the vacant lot and just see all the cars that come up there every hour. And it's like, how do I keep a good person right next to him in the unit? Where five years before that, someone was murdered in that unit. Then there was gunshot, the shot were fired, and then the FBI raided it a couple months ago, like four more. It's like, how do I combat with that landlords? And it just puts whoever in there. So, voluntary, yeah, it's, it's a great idea in thought, but and the people who are voluntary is not the ones you have to worry about. Like other places, uh, my best friend was at Captain Park Forest. I spoke with the, uh, I ran into the deputy chief who's in charge of everything. And I, he's, I explained, go, man, like, yeah, Saw Village, you just got your some crime-free housing, blah, blah, blah. And they have a really good program going on over there. And he's like, yeah, he's like, I actually came to talk to Saw Village. This might have been five, 10 years ago, where he came to talk, and they just kinda threw him off and said it. But the Park Forest one, I was in court before where I seen a landlord evicting a Section 8 tenant because they committed a crime there, and under Park Forest's crime-free housing, they had to put him out.
Have you spoke with Gary Hope, did he have a housing?
I spoke with Debbie, I, uh, over there, yeah, I, um, I spoke with her, I told her about everything, and then I, I was supposed to get his number from her, I never got his number. But this was two, three weeks ago, so... But I would love to work with whoever, because I have a lot invested in here. I don't know, I, I don't make money by putting, combating evil with evil. I'm not saying that everyone's evil, but how do I keep somebody in that their house was broken into a couple times? And, you know, it's, it's tough on that person.
So, it sounds to me like what you, what you as an investor in the village wants is an ordinance
That's some teeth.
That, that all rental properties must be listed under this crime-free zone. So that all rental properties, if you're gonna rent, and in order to rent it, you have to get...
Yes.
You have to get a certificate of occupancy.
Well, we do that.
You can't, you can't get that certificate of occupancy for your rental property unless you're on this list.
Yeah.
So, that's basically what you want. So, we obviously need the housing commission to, to present the proposal for an ordinance for this.
I love that idea, he, he was nice, yeah.
I have a couple properties. And the thing is, if, it's up to the landlord, and that's all fine and dandy.
That's all good, but if the landlord, see, you want this person out so bad. And you don't wanna, a lot of landlords don't wanna give that person a bad rap, because they want him out. They want the next landlord to take their responsibility. And that happens way too often, so you put all the plans in place. If you don't hold the landlord responsible, there's, that's where it's gonna stop at. It, it, the tenants are gonna be tenants. If you're gonna, um... If the tenant tear up the home, and the tenant not paying their rent, and you just want him out, and you see a number come across your phone for a reference. Oh, yeah, nice tenant, everything, yeah, take him in, 'cause you want him out. Uh, that's where it gotta stop at. You have to be honest, and you're gonna have to, um, be accountable and follow the 60 days, put the 60 days in with the...
What's a 60 days?
Okay. You got 60 days, you have to give them 60 days eviction notice with the...
I never heard of a 60-day notice.
Oh, yeah.
Does that slide in, wait to pay rent?
No, they have 60 days to evacuate the property. And you, you file it with Marlin. There are, there's legal papers that you could file that you keep, you have to keep a paper trail, month by month, day by day, everything that's on them. You put it, if they don't wanna answer the door, you take a picture, and you put it in the mailbox, and you send it in to Marlin, and you, you have to have a lawyer on it at, at all times. That's the only way you could do it.
There's a 30-day notice, I never, a 60-day notice is if you cancel somebody's contract in the middle of a year at least. No such thing as...
The, the 60 days is because you want to be ahead of the game. If you give them 60 days, you don't have to wait another... 'Cause see, they could wait another 30 days after your 30 days. You wanna get ahead of the game, so you don't have to wait.
So, wait another 60 days before you collect rent? I, I, I never heard of 60 days.
There's, there is a 60-day, it's in your favor, because you give them enough time, and you don't have to go back. 'Cause if you give them 30 days, you expect them out in 30 days.
They have another lease violation, it's 30 days notice, like, hey, uh, here's your 30-day notice, you have to be out of this property.
Exactly. If, but you can't...
Then they're gonna file at the court, which is always three weeks later from the date I...
But if you, if you knowingly, you can't file it in 60 days.
Am I still accepting rent from them while I file it 60 days?
No. They're not gonna pay you anyway, that's why you wanna put...
Well, the way it works is, if, let's say, the rent's, you want the first, I give no grace period. The second day comes, where's the rent? Okay, here's your five-day notice. After five days, I can start the eviction then, that's how it works, not 60 days.
Yeah, but the court won't put them out in the 30 days, they're gonna wait.
Okay, um, this is how, I probably had about six or six evictions, two of them, one of them was unsuccessful. The way eviction works in the timeframe is that, I'll use the example again, uh, here's your, okay, I didn't get my rent done the first. The second comes, here's your five-day notice. I can go to court on that sixth day, file the eviction. I will not get a court case for three weeks later. So, if the sheriff serves them the piece of paper, which if they're a professional tenant, I guess you can call them, oh, I see a sheriff here, I'm not gonna answer the door. So, they didn't receive paperwork. My three weeks, my three weeks later goes by, I go back to court, the judge says, yeah, okay, no service. Okay, then you ask the, oh, wait, a special process server. And then that person speaks up, like, hey, you can serve. So, now my court case was three weeks later after that. They show up to court, and the judge says, okay, the, the general rule, if they show up, the judge will give you two weeks to be out. But if they don't show up, sometimes they give you a couple of days and then possession. Then you have to take that piece of paper after a couple of days, go downtown to the day in the center, and then wait, I don't know, anywhere from four to, four to 12 weeks for the sheriff to come. But as far, as far as the, um, 60-day notice thing, I never heard of anything like that. It's a five-day notice for not paying their rent. 30-day notice if, like, your lease expires, to where you have to put, say, hey, you gotta leave at the end of the 30 days. Well, you can accept rent then, but they have to be out, period. And then if they're not, then you can file just a possession, not money due.
But see, if you file it 60 days in advance, know that you're not gonna get the money. You're already in, in, in a situation where you want them out. And see, this, this gives you that process to start it on your own. That way, all that what you're saying, you're gonna go through it, and by the time the end of those 60 days, they'll be out. On their own.
It's not crime-free housing. Hello? See, I think that you're confusing something. You only inquire about, I understand this is dragging on.
No, but they're, they're engaging, but I'm...
I understand, but it's unnecessary.
You're right, it's not crime-free housing, it's not... And to go back to what you were saying about the landlord not calling whoever, I, if it's a bad tenant, I will not get a call from a landlord saying, hey, this person wants to rent your property, where's my property, how are... I, well, my first eviction came because of that, 'cause I called her reference, but it was her best, whoever it was. I found a way around that, and what I would like to do is ship like to other landlords here, have a landlord class. I've been, you know, if you've been a landlord for 20 years, your time has kinda expired, meaning... I've been, you know, if you've been a landlord for twenty years, your time has kind of expired, meaning times are changing. Uh, there's something called the internet that's amazing, that I can show you free stuff to do, to look at people. And that's, you know, 'cause, for example, you're thinking, uh, you know, okay, oh, this person's your landlord, okay, I'm calling them. Hey, you own this property? Yeah, I'll just kind of, oh, great, they pay on time. Are you the owner or are you the manager? I'm the owner. Okay, great, so now I know to go on the Cook County website to see who's this property is registered to. And then that's how I can see if that's the real landlord or not. So I have ways around it that I'd love to share with my neighbors that are investors, or whoever wants to rent a place out here. So was there...
I figured I'd give you this, uh, early provision, don't go from anybody's state, that you're out of the country. That the city of Salt Village can interact with every person that rents a home in the village.
But builders are gonna pick somebody?
Listen, that's the thing is they, that you can go as, as a community, as a city council. They can set up this form where if you want to have your homeowner available for rent, you have to sign these forms with the city.
You already did it.
It's three strikes and you're out. The third time that person commits a crime, the homeowner has no, has nothing to do with it. The city just comes and evict them. This is what everybody in the state is doing.
I don't know.
Everybody in the state does. The city has, the homeowner has no, if you do something for that second time, you're in trouble. The third time, the city board has the right, because you signed it and that person who moved into your home has to sign that paperwork. And say, if I move in this home, my homeowner and I agree with the city, that three strikes and you're out. Every community is going to that. It's not that they...
Yeah, we, yeah, we do have that.
So then if that, if that's the case, then when someone breaks in your home, or someone commits a crime for the third time, it's not the homeowner's fault, it's not the tenant's fault. It's on the city to do what they're supposed to do.
Right.
And evict that person.
Okay.
It's just that simple. You commit a crime the third time, whether you live in this home or you commit that crime. If I live in this home and my son committed a crime, his address is my house, the city has the option to kick me out.
I like that.
'Cause he lives there.
Working in our grocery store, crime free housing, there, there, there waits a lot of time on the issue. Crime free housing, inquire with Gary Hopekun, you'll learn what crime free housing, register, get registered with our police department.
But I, I want everybody to register, not just me, the person who cares.
But see, this year, I'm no longer in that, they have people that are doing that, that are pushing people to register with our police department. It's not a, they're not doing it.
It's kind of like what you were saying earlier, it's an agreement, I guess, it's not written law, I think, let's get it written.
Yes, okay, what, what I was gonna say is, yes, we do have that. But, but, but you were here, I wanted you to explain to, first of all, and second of all, um, I want to get you involved with our housing authority. And I hope that you would, uh, wanna belong to the board, and maybe also get some of the other, um, landlords, investors involved. 'Cause that's what we need, we need, we, we need input from you guys. And I really, really appreciate you coming out and explaining to them, um, some of the things that, some of the prevails, or some of the problems that you may have with some of your tenants. And kind of let them know, um, it's not, it's not just, you know, you do care, you're out there all the time, however, you're not, you know, you're not a psych, you don't know who it is once they get in there. You don't know what they're going to do and how they're gonna take care of that. So, but we do have a lot of things in place, crime free housing, it is in place, after the storm strike that you were stated. Um, we can put them out, it has happened out here, maybe not with chores, but it has happened, so, we really appreciate it. Is this pertaining to this then?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I really just wanna make everybody aware of that, the reason why you have a mayor and three trustees here that cannot answer to this, 'cause it's a violation of the open meetings. I'm sure they're biting, they're biting at the chops trying to answer this question for you, but they can't, 'cause we have a forum right now. So they can participate in the meeting, but they cannot answer it. However, at the end of the meeting, they can. Or if two of them were to leave, we would no longer have a forum and they would be able to answer your question. 'Cause trustee Washington has something she'd like to say, trustee Myers has something, trustee Poskin and the mayor, all but in the interim. I would like to say, we do have a crime, the police don't cut me off, but you don't cut anybody else off.
I do.
We do have a crime free housing ordinance on the books. However, we are not a homeroom community. Homeroom communities have much more, they're able to put teeth in their ordinance, and they're able to enforce it. We are not a homeroom community. It, it's in the hands of the police department right now, your questions can be better served. The housing commission did their job, they went out and did the research, and they created the ordinance, the board did their job, they passed the ordinance. However, now it's in the hands of the police department. The police department needs extra personnel to work with this ordinance. And there's things that we need that this village cannot do, 'cause we're not homeroom. But she's on it, and she would be happy to talk to, this is trustee Washington, and mayor Hanks, at the end of the meeting, oh, two left, okay, two left.
Okay, um, only thing I'm saying is this, and I'm gonna say this one time. We're here to listen to what the audience has to say. Please stay on that particular, we go off, yes, I will say something, because we're not here for I, we're here for you guys. So, yes, mayor.
I just wanna clear something up real quick, uh, crime free housing, we do have ordinance in books, however, right now it's placed on Hopekun. I'll tell you why, it's because crime free rental property housing ordinance was challenged in the courts. Currently, right now, the homeroom communities can have crime free housing ordinance. What we have is a volunteer, if any landlord wanna come and, and submit their, their properties and keep it on file, we're not gonna do it. Uh, encouraging you to write your, your senators, which currently, right now, Senate bill fourteen ninety-six is in the senate right now. And the bill provides any non-homeowner community or residential property to adopt a crime free rental housing ordinance. Um, for the purpose of reducing crime in rental areas, currently, uh, the homeroom communities only have this authority. So while we do have on our books right now currently, we're not enforcing it because it was challenged. Um, but we are pushing on our senators to pass bill fourteen, uh, just, we have this, right, bill, Senate bill fourteen ninety-six. So if you're contacting your senators, if yours is, if you write to them, and they get that vote passed, thank you.
Okay, you can open the door and let them, them back in. Uh, I, I really feel honored that we have three other trustees and a mayor here. I must be doing something right, yes, mayor. Debbie, Debbie, please, I, I'm just saying, this is, I, I'm, okay, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that, yes, mayor?
Just to say something...
Wait a minute, I need to get you a microphone. Oh.
Just to kind of speak on the topic, I'm a renter in Salt Village for the last five years, and I don't plan on purchasing a home for another four years. Um, but what I have noticed is that renters are the ones that don't care about the village, because they don't own the property. It's homeowners that do care. And like you were speaking on, it's hard to get good tenants in, that, that pay your rent on time, that take care of the property if the other renters across the street are dealing drugs, or loving music at night, it's hard, because I'm a good tenant. And I don't wanna be on a block. I don't wanna be on a block where there's, I mean, I have two small children, where there's negativity going on. So, um, I feel like if there's something that the village could do to, meaning, for getting everybody that does rents to, um, do this crime free housing program. To where if it is three strikes, then you're out. Um, that will also help bring more families into the village that want to live here, because then they understand that the village cares, and that they're trying to do something. So I think, you know, in order for Salt Village to grow, we have to be able to get families to want to be here anymore, and how do we do that? Salt Village is known for having violence, and it's a bad neighborhood, it's a bad village, but it's not how it, that's not how all of it is.
Right, right.
So, you know, to get that, kind of, put that back on the map, but I would love to be here for another ten years, I love my acres, I love my block, but there's just... You know, you always have that one house or that two, right, that one house or that two, those two houses. I don't wanna move to Park Forest where my water bill is five hundred dollars a month, you know what I mean? So, okay, that's all I have to say.
I just wanna say, um, and I'm glad that you brought this up, because we're getting ready to go into budget session. Those are some of the things that could be brought up during that time, when we start looking at the different budgets for different apartment heads. Listening to you guys, listening to the residents, and see what input, where we should concentrate the money.
I know, I, I've signed a lease every year that I've been in Salt Village, I just re-signed my lease, and there was nothing in there at all about any type of three strikes, then you're out, nothing at all. And I, my lease is probably fifteen days long, and I've read, yeah, it's, it's, it's long, I've read through it, and there's absolutely nothing about crime.
That's every night.
But, um, yeah, that's a great idea though.
I'm glad you came out to say that, because, uh, I'm sure a lot of people feel the same way. You know, what can we do, that's why I brought this gentleman out today, so he can give, give us some of the odd things that's going on, some of the ideas that he has. Um, it takes all of us to put our heads together, try to combat the problems that we have in the village. It's not just one person, it takes a bunch. Yes.
If you want some teeth, if you wanna take our village back, and as, as regards to property maintenance, uh, what, what's going on with section eight housing, a lot of other issues in this town, they'll need to get home rule on the ballot. Our, our, the village, their, their hands are tied. Being a non-homeroom community, we are very limited in what we can do. We used to do point of sale inspections, we may still do, I don't know. Uh, but those were illegal for us to do when we were doing them, because we're a non-homeroom community. We need to get home rule put on the ballot. But as soon as you do, all the, um, realtors and all those other groups come out and start putting up all kinds of bad propaganda to scare people about homeroom. Uh, because they don't wanna see us put requirements on them to maintain their properties.
Um, another thing, too, that I'd like to say is that, you know, I, I know the village is, uh, you know, strapped with money, the situation, everything. Um, but, but if someone moves out or someone moves in, that five years, I don't know, maybe a little bit longer, I had to have a stock village inspector come out, look at everything. And then make sure that house, housing quality was okay, meaning, I can't have, you know, a big stain on my carpet over here, screens missing, you know, they got rid of that. Um, and I used to have to pay fifty dollars for that inspection. Now when someone moves out, I have to have someone, well, I also had to have a furnace inspection also, which is fifty, a hundred bucks, whatever. Now, when someone moves out, I have to have someone that inspects my electric, inspects my plumbing, inspects my, uh, you know, roof. And that stuff's all fine and everything. And then now it costs me probably four hundred dollars every move out I have. But no one questions the quality of my housing. Um, I could be missing screens, holes in my screens, um, I can have carpet tore up, but I would still get approved for occupancy. It seems like, what kind of, what kind of person's gonna move in a house with, you know, carpet stains, you know, holes in the wall, no one checks it. Um, I understand with the money situation, but, you know, can, I wouldn't mind paying a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars for a stock village inspector to come out to question the quality of my house. Hey, you have paint chipping here, this or that. And it would still be cheaper than having each one of those inspectors come out and inspect, 'cause now I still have to pay the, all the inspectors. And I still have to pay the fifty dollars that I used to pay to have a stock village inspector that comes out and... So.
No, that's, that's a great idea, and like I said before, um, this is budget time. I mean, we, we cut our, talking about the apartment down to the bone, where you're absolutely right. And we used to have more inspectors, but now we don't have them. Um, and, uh, that's something that, again, that we could, we could discuss at the budget time to, like I said, we need to throw money at things that's going to enhance this village. Throw money at things that are going to promote this village. Those, those ideas sound great, because, uh, that's how we have to, that's how we have to start. I mean, you, we have a housing problem out here, you drive, you gotta do is come down three ninety-four, and when you get past Lincoln Ha, Lincoln Highway, look to your left. You know, so those are some of the things that, that we need to look at to find out what those costs are. I know everyone is talking about water, but we need to look at other things to make it more, enhance Salt Village more, so we can attract the businesses. We can attract people to come out. It's been a long time since they built out here, but they're still building around in other areas. So we, we, we can, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna throw money around, let's, let's do it in a way that is going to enhance, upgrade, and update this village. And, uh, I appreciate that, I appreciate those that had comments about that, because, believe me, you, as was stated before, you got your trustees here, you got your mayor here, they're listening. They're listening to what you have to say, as far as what you would like to see, how you would like to see this village move forward. Is there anyone else? Really? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna take a chance.
As long as I got my mic.
But I'm, I'm not looking for, oh.
I'm not trying to be that dare.
Okay.
There's a nice friendly village, but it's not a resident here.
One last comment, I'm tired of hearing how we don't have enough police officers. When you look at the number of police officers for a population's community, and you compare it to other communities with similar crime statistics, we are not understaffed. I think what we have is a management problem, and that needs to be addressed.
That's enough to say to that, but, um, and I just, you know, I just have a... I, me, myself, I'm always, I like to have, for instance, and my for instance would be how many police officers are in flexible? You have an idea?
Uh, we have two on duty, occasionally three.
And, and how big is their population?
Ounculations of same.
Okay. All right.
Chief for...
Thank you, trustee Rogers. Um, I just wanted to clear up two things, I did step into my office, uh, page two of last year's budget does show the hundred twenty-five thousand dollar check that Mr. Solomon referred to. So the budget is online. And second of all, as far as the senior policy, the senior policy is different than the policy that the trustees may have for the rotunda. In the senior policy, it specifically states, no political literature is allowed in the senior senate. So that's their policy. So that's available for inspection, your budget is available for inspection, and the hundred twenty-five thousand dollars was discussed at budget meetings. Those minutes are also available for inspection, I'd be happy to provide them for anybody who may want them. If you need clarity, this is a town hall meeting, we're a little bit, some of the people that wanna speak here can't because of the open meetings act. But if you need clarity, uh, something that's been stated, there's almost always a policy ordinance for minutes that reflects to what you're hearing. And I would be happy to provide that for you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um...
Thank you. It's really encouraging to see so many of your faces out here, and speaking on behalf of Campaign Lifter. What I would like to just invite each one of you, as you're leaving out, I'm not going to distribute. However, this edition of Salt Talk is sitting right back on the table, and as you are leaving, I would invite you to pick up a copy of the Salt Talk, because it has the bios of all of the candidates in this document. It's not being distributed, but I would like you to look at the one from Markham, yeah, approved. Because it's all written, thank you.
That's right, Mark, I know that's...
I was gonna say something about that, I don't believe it alone. Julie, you have something to say?
Yeah. First of all, it's a little scary seeing everybody here, simply because the last time that happened, we were in behind the, uh, chopping block for the open meetings act. So, uh, I hope it doesn't happen again. But I wanna bring up something that came up at the board meeting last night that has been bothering me. It bothered me before the meeting, during the meeting, and after the meeting. And it's still bothering me. And that's the ordinance that they're going to try to pass next Tuesday, I believe. The ordinance creating the position of a village administrator, and the ordinance creating position for the director of public safety. I don't have a problem with either one of the positions. My problem is that you put a, a block on hiring, we're making cuts every place we can. They have cost initiative on the agenda every, every board meeting. They're trying to figure out rents, they're trying to figure out ways to get us to move forward because of money that we're not gonna receive from the governor or from the state. Everything is, you know, tighten your belts, cut down your departments, uh, cut down this, and let's disintegrate that. But now let's talk about hiring a village administrator and a director of public safety. For the past couple of years, we haven't had either one. We've gotten through without it. It's the idea of paying a lawyer to get both of these ordinances together, so that they can read them over and then pass this next Tuesday. This costs money, those lawyers didn't do that for nothing. We've got one of the, the people that's laid off that was making money for the village and what she was doing with the ordinances. But she's still laid off, but we're gonna bring somebody else in, and we can't pay them. We don't have the money. The cuts that the governor is making is gonna cost us an additional, quote the mayor, five hundred thousand dollars a year possibly, if he doesn't change his mind. That's a lot of money, that means tax increase, that means a whole lot of big cuts. Why are we talking about spending more money? And if it's just to have it on the books, that doesn't make sense either. Because I was taught, if you pull your gun, your gun shoot it. Why do we have to have that on the books when we're not gonna be able to use it for quite some time because of the way finances are? And I think, and you hear it each time, we're here for you, and you, and you, the residents. But I don't feel we're being heard. Things are being done with, I'll, I'll stay. Wait a minute, wow, what? This came up so fast? And why? Why the expediency? Why now? And, and it puts a lot of questions in my mind, and it makes me think of a few years ago that weren't too good. And I'm hoping and I pray that it isn't a repeat of some of the stuff that went on then. And those, those are the things that have been on my mind. Do I hear what's going on on the street? Of course I do. So does everybody else. Do I believe it all? No, I don't. I came to the meeting to ask the questions. But I'm still uncomfortable because I didn't get the answers that I felt would alleviate. I still don't understand what the expediency is in, in these two ordinances. And, and why right this minute? Why next? Bring it up this week, and next Tuesday we're gonna pass it. For what? I, I just, you know, and hey, I don't know if anybody else feels the way I do. I think we're spending money we don't have without, I don't know. I was told at a board meeting, the trustees are the ones that handle the money. They're responsible for the money that is spent for the village and what goes out, et cetera. That's the trustees, because they have to vote for that. And so if money is spent, you blame the trustees because they voted yes. So we're spending money for attorneys, we're spending money for this, we're spending money for that. I didn't hear anything come up. And I'm sorry, but I very rarely get any of the financial stuff in the back at a board meeting. If it's out there, people get it before I do, or once in a while I get it. But then you need to read that and, and understand it before the first thing at that meeting is questions from the audience. Well, I don't know about any of you, but I can decipher that and get it in my mind and everything while they're doing the pledge. So I think people have to think about it. If, if you don't come to the meetings, they are on the internet, the plan page videotapes every meeting, and it's put on the plan page without anything done to it. And you need to start asking questions, or you need to come to the meetings. But, and I, I hope you understood what I was trying to say. It's, that's it.
Does everybody understand what she was talking and referring to as far as ordinances that we're talking about yesterday? Does everybody understand that? Did any, does anyone need any explanation behind that? Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick question. Where is the money coming from to pay for this? The people that are gonna slide in here, where, where's the money? Don't we have to live on a budget like the rest of us do?
Yes.
This is ridiculous.
Okay, let me explain. It was asked yesterday, asked by several trustees, and it was told to us that this is just an ordinance to be put on the books just in case. And there's no money attachment, because we don't know, or it's not been told to us how much your range would be.
Doesn't that feel sneaky to you?
Well, I'm not, I'm not here to answer, I can't answer that. I, I, this, okay, but as far as qualifications is one of the things that I asked about, and several of the trustees also asked. If I'm gonna put a ordinance on record, I don't want it open in, I want you to give me qualifications. Let me know what this person or the person that we're looking for. Don't wait until after we put it on there, because I'm gonna explain that to you. If you put the ordinance on there and it has no qualifications, you go out and hire someone, you can sit back all you want, the ordinance does not have qualifications, and that person does not necessarily buy the book and buy your ordinance. There's, there's no qualification there, so you can hire who you want with the approval of the board now. Any hiring is with the approval of the board. You gotta think about that too. So if you put this out here with no qualifications, you could make up something. You can say that they need to be eighteen and have a high school diploma and live wherever, you can put that on there. But that does not mean that they have the proper qualifications to be over those particular departments that they're talking about. Public safety would be over public safety, which would be your police and your fire. It would be the person that, they would, the police and fire chief would go to and talk to this public safety officer, who in turn talks to the village manager. If you hire one, and then who in turn talks to the mayor. You're right, where's the money coming from? But it also states that if we don't have a fire chief, or for some reason that, that particular position becomes vacant, this public safety officer takes that position. So, I mean, you know, you can get a copy of it at the village hall, I'm sure you have copies, you can get a bomb order and get a copy of those two ordinances. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, and may I make a statement on something, because I'm hearing cost initiatives programs. We've got one code enforcer. The question I'm asking is, all these empty houses that happen to be inspected, who, do you, are we going to an outside agency to do these things, or how is that?
When you, when your house, in other words, you say, when someone wants to, to move in.
Yes.
They expect you, as a person, you're gonna move in, have to go and get all the certifications yourself and bring them to the village.
Okay. See, that's where we had code enforcers to do that. We talked about.
No, we had, we had a person that would do.
We had persons, but we had at least four code enforcers at one time.
The code enforcers is a little different. Code enforcement goes out and does the violations.
Violation. And also the inspections also.
Well, we had, no, no, we had a bill of the inspector for that.
Out of the four. See, and those are creative positions that would pay for themselves. And I just don't understand why we got this one violation seeker that's not doing a whole, it doesn't even pay for itself. The, our code inspector, that position doesn't pay for itself.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, you're talking about our code enforcer?
Code enforcer, yes.
Yes, it does.
It does?
Oh, yes, it does, and we get the money.
We got three thousand three hundred homes.
Okay.
Are they making that right? How would you state that they don't even do a fraction of that?
What I stated was, I would like to see us go out and get a code enfor- I'm sorry, a code enforcer, to come seasonally to add on, between spring and fall, to come out and go around to the homes. Because we have one code enforcement for the industrial park, retail businesses, and housing. That one person is doing all that. We need another person, that was just my recommendation, to come out and give them a hand, to do what I have, because that one person's writing maybe a hundred tickets, two hundred tickets a week. Now, our problem is collection. Okay, we're working on that now. We have a person now working on that to make that happen. But yes, we need personnel to get out there because I've walked around this village in the last month, and there's a lot of inspections, and there's a lot of code violations. And I know our code enforcer cannot see all of that, it's one person. And she stops and needs, she, but she has to, she can't get it off. So yes, she needs help. We abandoned, well, that, that position was, I wanna say back then, Louis Tyler's his second year, so that had to be 2010, is when they got rid of all of code enforcement except for one person. And that was a budgetary thing. So, as I stated before, you guys are talking, I'm hoping that the trustees are listening to where we need to put the money, where we need to, to concentrate on what we're going, as far as the budget is concerned, where we're gonna put the money at. Yes, ma'am?
When you are standing, when you come off thirty and you look to your, your left, when you come off the expressway over Route Thirty and you look to your left, I mean, some of the houses look abandoned. Are they abandoned?
I can tell you now, because I've been over there.
You're talking about code enforcer, has she been over there?
Yeah, oh yeah, but then, okay, the homes, it's, it's hard to get a house.
Are people living in them homes?
No. They're squatting, some people are squatting.
Okay, why, why you just can't board them up? I mean, it's.
But they are boarded, they are boarded up.
Everything is boarded up.
They're boarded up, but they find a way to get in them. I would like to see, find legislation, talk to our, we're gonna talk to our representatives and start to find out what we can do, because a lot of it just has a problem. What we can do to knock these homes down.
Is that probably for sale owners?
I don't see it for sale sign, but I'm sure, I mean, would you buy, I mean, if this.
But if you got money to gut it all.
You know, if this, if, if that's the case, but we don't know what it looks like on the inside, but I would like to see them knocked down, to find out what legislation we could do that we could go to these banks, those homes are probably backed on.
I mean, because that's the first view you see.
Yes, it is. Absolutely. I call them lean to's, because they're leaning towards each other. And, and then you have a group up right there. You know, people were talking about, okay, let's put a fence up, let's put a band-aid over, over whatever. It's still have a problem, because those people that live on that street, which is, Peterson has that problem. I was talking to neighbors just the other day. Can you do anything about that? We, those are the things we need to put on the books so we can knock them down, level them, or whatever. I'd rather look at an open field than look at a house as a better, because anything could be in there. I'm coming home from night.
It's been there a while.
Yes, it has.
It's enough, enough.
Yes, it is.
Somebody, y'all gonna stop putting it on the books, and somebody gonna do something. I don't know.
That's why, that's.
Put the band-aid on, it's better than nothing.
What you're saying, that's why I have these meetings, so people can hear exactly. But when I say it, it seems like, when you, you know, because that is a problem.
It's the first view you see.
Because not only that, you live across the street from that, you come home at night thinking everything is okay, this nigga bought you because they were sitting there watching, or they sitting there watching you as you leave. And God forbid your neighbors say, I didn't see anything.
But, but you have to find another solution considering there's no money in the account for that? I don't know.
Well, that's why I said you have to prioritize.
Yes.
Where's the mic?
I'm through, I'm through.
Okay, how'd the mic get from over there? Okay, go ahead.
As long as it's a drill.
Then she has a question.
Judy brought up a very good point, that years ago, when there was a village board in America, and things got done a lot more professionally than what you see today. A lot of the stuff that's going on, it seems political. And back in the day, when ideas or concepts for positions or for important matters were brought before the board, they were discussed, people voiced in, gave their opinions, before ordinances were drafted, before money was spent on attorneys to draft ordinances. And we don't see that today, and Judy brought up a good point, and so did Maria Pialli last night, that when you spend money to have attorneys draft ordinances, and then you sit here and say, well, we, where's the cost savings initiatives? Well, there's one right there. Discuss matters with your village board, all of the members. Ask them for ideas, ask them for their thoughts on matters before you draft ordinances and spend money. There's a cost savings initiative. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good.
Excuse me, I shouldn't line, I shouldn't walk.
Does it matter?
Where did I go?
I do.
Okay, okay, okay. A lot of people talk, this young man doesn't, where he, where he talks. But go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I would like to get back to the tearing down homes. It costs about twenty-five thousand dollars to take a home down, because we have to follow down environmental guidelines. The village does not have the money to take homes down. And nobody's able to help us, especially at this time of times.
I'm not here, okay, you.
Speak closer to the mic.
Because I'm, I'm here to part with what you said.
Okay. I'd like to say it takes about twenty-five thousand dollars per home to take one down, because it has to be taken down environmentally friendly, like asbestos, whatever, mold, all of these have to be handled by specialists. Okay, the village just does not have the money to remove those homes, and nobody's helping us. The county doesn't have any money, the state doesn't have any money. So I don't think anybody's gonna be able to do anything about it for the near future.
Ms. Parker.
And this is not just a new problem, it's been there for a while.
Oh, you're right, but, but my, my question is this, and I understand what you're saying, that it costs this, but I'm more apt to go after those legis- same legislators that promised us this grant for this, promised us this money for that. This is a problem that I'm looking at. If you live across the street from that home, you definitely want to find out, I mean, you said, like you stated before, it's been like that for a while. Yes, it has. But are we gonna continue to keep making it like that? If I'm gonna go ask a legislator for something, those are some, that's your entryway, especially right there on Peterson off of the expressway, that's your entryway to your village.
Is your intergovernmental committee working on that?
Intergovernmental committee, okay, now essentially, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, no, no, wait, just a second, you just asked a question, I'm gonna try to answer it for you.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to answer it for you, I'm gonna answer it for you. Intergovernmental relation is exactly what you're talking about. Yes, I have gone to all of your representatives. Yes, I have gone to your state representatives, we have two state representatives, and I told them, I've gone to Robin Kelly and asked her to come out and look, don't just come out and, and come out waving your hand and say, okay, I'm gonna give you this, come out and see exactly what's going on out here in the village. So if you're gonna say that intergovernmental is supposed to do that, no, they're not, we cannot make a legislator, but I'm gonna keep making that person or persons aware of what's going on. You're right, it's been like that for a while. It's been that way, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to stay that way. And I'm not trying to sit here and say, well, we can't do it right now. Yes, we can. We can try to go, if you wanna go out and talk to your legislators about things, talk about something that has a great impact in your community. That's a great impact.
I'd like to say that as owner housing commission, we've gone to the legislators. The sheriff that was going to bring out his task force to take the homes down, but everything has been pulled because there's no money.
Okay, okay, I don't know.
Go, go ahead.
Have you finished? He, he want handles reforming. Oh, so.
I just wanna say that Mr. Joe Wazewatt, your very senior resident of the state.
And doesn't.
Mr. Shankle, what's your question is?
No.
What's your, what's your question? What's your question, sir?
Oh, I have a statement, the idea is like, we also have cost initiative websites, like Little Village of Cannonwell, from the other side and things. If you get on those Facebook websites, you can also get some, some recognition and cost-effective things of that sort also, as long as we're, putting plugs into the websites.
With enough, enough plug in websites.
Yeah, you're good, all right.
Go ahead, man.
Okay, I'm, I'm not a money person, I don't know where the money comes from, I don't know where the money goes. I'm not putting no figures, whatever, but if the mayor don't have it, can we do a chain of command, like the military, go to the governor? I don't know, but I know if kids happen to just get an idea, go back there and play, we might have death on our hands.
Yes, you will.
Somebody gotta.
Somebody gotta, somebody gotta pay for something. America's still running out. Money is somewhere, I don't know. But we don't have it. So do we use our chain of command? I don't, I don't know. I'm ignorant in this field of money.
Would you beg for something? When you out there asking legislators for certain things? Would you concentrate on certain things? At one time, way back when, we concentrated on water. You saw what happened. They promised everything. It was a big political...
Yeah, but as far as getting back to the water, every time you all saying to better the water, which somebody still has to pay, and it might be a couple pennies out of our pocket, we start crying. "I don't want no water to go out." But we want clean water. Somebody has to pay for it.
Everybody wants to go to heaven, if nobody wants to die.
Somebody has to pay for it.
But you know what? What you all don't seem to remember is I don't care if it costs $1 to take that house down. If it doesn't belong to you, you can't bring it down. This is not stock village property. Somebody owns it. The bank, a landlord, somebody.
Okay, but if, okay, the bank of the house, the bank owns the house, and he's not keeping his order, I mean, you know, whatever, you know, that needs to be inspected, and he's not up to par, what, can we attack the bank to do something about it? I don't know.
I imagine we can, but I don't know that for sure. I do not know that.
I mean, how come we're not checking him, because, you know?
Well, that's something that I would have to ask.
And then that bill would be on the bank. That might be a way out.
For 13 years, I worked with a real estate office that sold bank-owned properties. And it is a tricky, tricky business. It takes forever, because, especially since 2008, when foreclosures went up the air, it's hard to get a foreclosure through the court system. And if it's occupied, it's even harder. We had a house that was assigned to us to monitor through the foreclosure and through the eviction. It was 10 years before they were able to get the people out of the house. And it's, you can't do it overnight. Like she said, the property belongs to somebody. It's either sold at a bank sale, it's sold at a tax sale, or it goes back to the bank as an REO. And those, you know, and it takes time to get it, especially if you have to go through the court.
If you own that house, and the stairs are almost falling down, like I say, if a child happened to go back there, being curious.
About the only recourse that you have, if it's, because all bank properties are assigned a real estate agent to monitor it at one time or another. If you have a big problem, the only thing you could possibly do is to go through the records, the tax records, and find out what bank owns it. And then you'll have to make some phone calls, and you'll have to wait online for somebody to get back to you. But you could probably get a hold of the agent or the person involved at the bank who could get, take care of whatever it is you need. But it's, you're talking to corporate. And when you talk to a corporation, you go from one extension to the next until you finally get somebody.
I got all that, I got all that village form and all that. But these people are not getting fined because they're not keeping...
And that's what the village needs to probably do, is to make sure that they...
Nobody can do that.
Right. Most villages do have, they do find the properties. We were, have had to pay fines in order to get the properties on the market, because they won't even let you put a for sale sign up until you come in and you pay all these outstanding fines, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, as well as make the repairs that need to be done for you to put the property on the market. So, yeah, it, it, it can be done. It's just that it takes time to do all this stuff.
That's what my question was to Mr. Burgess. Are these people getting fined? I mean, year after year after year? Because when they, whenever somebody step up and do their responsibility, that'd be like any cash, because they have to pay that money before they sell it. It's just something to think about.
Now, what you just said is correct. They're being, they're being fined, but they're not paying until they sell that property.
Fine, but keep filing.
But, I mean, but my question is this. Okay, we sit here, we, you know, we go back and forth. Bottom line, we have legislators out there, we have lawyers out there. Let's, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. You know, I don't know all the, all the ordinances and resolutions, but...
Won't do.
That's, no, no, that's what, that's what we, that's what we pay people for. My thing would be, years ago, it took us about a year, I don't know how long you've been out here, but it took us about a year to knock that gas station down on South Trail. One year. We were back and forth, going back and forth, back and forth. It took a year to level that, all the paperwork. That was just one gas station.
That's the game.
So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, to try to find out what legislation that we can put in place and that we can have some teeth, we can go back to these so-called representatives and say, "Hey, this is what we want," because this is our community. When you drive in, because if we don't get it to where it's conducive so a business to come out, they go to the next...
The problem will spread.
No, not, no, no, not just spread. What happened is, that retailer or that investor will go to the next red light, which is down on State Road. They'll still get you a dollar, because you're gonna go out there and shop. They'll still get your business, because you're gonna go out there. I want them to stop.
But Mr. Burgess, it's like, well, if we look at that property, well, we gotta cut our grass. South Village ain't gonna do nothing to us. Look at that property. We don't have to, you know, put some flowers...
I understand what you're saying. And that's why, that's why I want them down. That's why I want, I want, that's why I would like to see if we can enact some type of legislation with the help of our legislators to have some teeth, to knock them down, hold somebody accountable.
I hear you talking. How long have, and I'm not...
It's been a while.
How long have y'all been talking?
We've talked about it all the time, but as was stated before, it's built up. I'm telling, let's, let's make the legislators, the ones that we put in there like we do us, hold them accountable. Put them, bring them and talk to them. Those are the questions you ask them. Not, "Hey, how you doing? We need some water." We ask, "We do need water." But this is a fix that I'm sure they can do with a lot, not a lot of money. Because water will cost you millions of dollars. This is something that you can do if they enact, and they can enact legislation.
You said that phrase, but do you mean the congressmen?
I'm talking every person that's so-called representative of South Village. You have state senators, you have state representatives, and you have a congressman. Those are your representatives of your village. They represent you. They get paid for the same tax money. So those are the people that we have to go to. Okay, I know it's quarter to nine. I appreciate everybody coming out. Today, I think it was very, very enlightening. We did get a lot of questions asked and answered. And I just wanted to have one comment before we get out of here. I know a lot of times, well, here recently, and then also this time of year, is election time. Only thing I have to say about that is this. Please, please do your homework. You know? Don't just because he looks good, sound good, or whatever the face may be. This is your village. This is when you have a chance to speak as a taxpayer, as a voter, as a villager. Election time. This is when you say, "All right, I'm okay," or "I'm not okay." This is when you speak. Use that. People died back in the day to get a chance to vote. Now you have that chance. Please come out. Please show your representation. Please vote. Whoever, that's no problem. But at least come out. Don't wait till after the fight is over. "Well, I don't, I don't care about that." If you don't care, if you don't like the way things are, show your support. That's when you show your support, at the polls. Please, guys, come out and vote. Again, thank you very much for coming out. And we will have another time for me next month, Thursday of the month, same time, same place. Thank you very much.
Now, if anyone has questions, trusting that he's back there. Don't y'all sneak out. They just couldn't say anything, but they can talk now.